We're going to have department roundtables. Libraries here first. Go.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. I don't often get the chance to address the city council, so I might have the opportunity. I do have a lot to say, so I'm going to sort of, I won't say speed through this, but I'm going to try to keep moving.
You've got to use your packet. You've got to use your packet. The monitors aren't working.
The department mission is, is pretty self-evident. I will say it was put together by library staff with a facilitator a few years back, and it's undergone revisions and updates since then. Our measures of success: we have data on circulation and in-house use of library materials, which is captured on an ongoing basis in our circulation database. We also keep statistics on program attendance and computer use. We do an annual in-house survey, which we've actually been doing for about nine or 10 years. We, it's, it's a very small, like a bookmark-sized survey that we administer to everyone who comes into the library and checks out books for one week every spring. And it, it asks them to evaluate their visit in terms of courtesy, efficiency, did they find what they want? If not, you know, what would they like to see in the collection to improve it, that kind of thing. And of course, the needs assessment that we did at the end of fiscal year 13 was particularly important. It yielded a lot of really important information for us. It consisted of focus groups, that was seven conversations with 35 residents, 13 staff, five council members, and nine or 10 management staff as well. There was an online survey with 252 respondents and included 212 open comments. The, the first chart that you see here on this page is library circulation for the second, and in-house use for the second quarter of this fiscal year compared with the three prior years. It shows it has gone up a bit. The library had, circulates, or did circulate, over 114,000 books in fiscal year 13.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the, on the piece of paper, you can't tell the color of the two bars.
So which one is decreasing?
There's the, is it the right, left?
Oh, well, you're looking at, on the right-hand side, you're, you're looking at fiscal year 14.
We don't know which is in-house and which is circulated.
Oh, I'm sorry. Circulation is, is the larger bar.
Okay.
Which is red on the screen, but you can't see it. Okay.
We don't have a screen.
In-house use is just materials that are used in the library, but not checked out.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Okay. Moving on to the next sheet, we also show, we keep statistics on program attendance and use of the computer center. The first chart again shows second quarter of this year compared with prior years. Fiscal year 14 is on the left. We have over 15,000 program attendees annually. And up until, up until this past spring, that was done with one children's librarian and some adult assistance for adult programs. The chart on the right shows computer center use. Fiscal year 14 is at the top and reflects the fact that we opened on Sundays from 12 to 5. It has, you know, this chart shows sessions and hours used. And fiscal year 13, we opened the center weekdays, beginning in October, from 12 to 2. Show it's, it shows some increase there. Nearly 15,000 hours of computer time is logged annually. That was also from fiscal year 13. Key projects and achievements. The library visioning and needs assessment report in fiscal year, or yeah, 2013 was particularly important for us. It yielded a lot of important information. It contains a summary of survey and focus group responses, best practices of 21st century public libraries, consultant recommendations, followed by an appendix which details all the data that was gathered. Sunday hours and programs. Sunday hours began in May of this past year, and programming began in July or August of that year. The, the programs emphasize community engagement and creative play, which may or may not be book-related. This reflects growing trends in public libraries. In fact, in the book that Terry recommended in the last fiscal year, well, actually just earlier in the year, called Expect More, it emphasizes non-traditional services. We don't have a makerspace with 3D printers, but we do have craft programs. We have yoga classes, not classes, but a program around yoga. And in May, we're going to be beginning a Lego club, which is actually very popular in public libraries across the country. Freezing, we have downloadable eBooks now. Through freezing, they, they allow simultaneous access to over 22,000 books from dozens of publishers. Simultaneous access means that you don't have to wait for a title that's in the database. You can just download it right away. The MOOCs, or massive open online courses, have become increasingly popular. They are held on Sundays in the computer center. Morality and Everyday Life was the one that is just concluding now, and it's been especially popular. In April, we're going to be doing a six-week course on the work of Andy Warhol. This, too, is actually an emerging movement in public libraries, and I've read a lot about it in the literature, so we're, we're pleased to be at the, at the forefront of this kind of program in our computer center. We have an ongoing relationship with Politics and Prose Bookstore. They use us as a kind of alternate venue for some of their programs, so they bring authors and illustrators in. We don't have to pay them to speak, and they sell their books. It's been a great collaboration for us. We've had graphic novelists such as Paul Pope, Gareth Hines, George O'Connor, and children's authors such as Phyllis Reynolds Naylor, who actually filled up the auditorium with her program. Digital collections. We're expanding our collection of digital reference tools, which is great because they're always up to date, and they don't occupy space, which is an obvious advantage for us. They include things like full-text magazines, college and career information and testing, language learning, health, history, and resources for kids. Summer Quest has always, our summer reading program.
Keep going.
Oh, my gosh. Okay. Our summer reading program has had a record attendance every year, and we've introduced a variation for younger children, really young children, to use with their parents. This was actually one of the comments in the survey, and we've really been doing it for a couple of years now. This last winter, we introduced Winter Quest, which is kind of a modified reading program to encourage kids to keep on reading during the winter break. And of course, adult programs, book discussions, and lectures, many of which are supported by the Friends of the Library. The report that was done focused on three main areas of recommendations, and I'm actually going to take the second one first. Weeding collections. All libraries weed their collections all the time, review what's in them, take out what isn't circulating well, what's not up to date, what's in bad condition. And we're doing it more aggressively now because we can do more with a smaller collection. If you're talking about changing space or importing records into a new integrated library system, it's, it's important to know what your collection really consists of, as opposed to a lot of extraneous stuff that you may need to take out later. So we're, we're doing, we're doing that now. Integrated, a new integrated library system is something that we're interested in pursuing and are proposing if, if we're able to do that. An ILS system provides for circulation functions, catalog, and patron database management. We've had the same system, basically, which is now Autographics Verso since 2005, but they absorbed a local system called Maxus, which we got in 1998 when we first automated. So basically, we've had those systems ever since the library's collection was automated. It doesn't have a lot of features that patrons like and want. There are no reviews in them. There are no book covers that you can see. It doesn't take online reserves or fine payments online. It can be awkward to access, and it has a somewhat cumbersome structure for logging and fine payments. So it's not only occasionally frustrating for users, but time-consuming for staff as well, when they're working at the desk and it's busy, and you have to do a lot in a hurry. So it, it was a report recommendation as something we agree with, we're interested in pursuing. Next, a plan for additional and/or renovated library space or redesign. The first step of that would be issuing an RFP for interior space review. That would consist of putting together a program of requirements with staff and a consultant, developing a conceptual design around a program of requirements, and bringing in a structure, I'm sorry, a structural engineer to see what's possible going forward. And after that, utilizing an interior space review to begin design and construction of space. The report gave a summary of 21st century best practices in public libraries, so I'd like to quickly review those. Many of these things we do already, insofar as we're able to, in terms of our building capacity and staffing. First of all, community gathering and engagement. Libraries require flexible, non-traditional spaces for group events of different sizes, collaborative study and discussion spaces, content creation spaces, spaces for technology classes, children's programming, quiet study, and reading spaces. Of course, outreach to immigrant communities is very important, ideally to be able to reach out and engage where they are, where they live. Many are not familiar with public libraries. We do get a number of patrons in the library and computer center who are visiting libraries, public libraries here for the first time. We need to get cards. We need to get the, use the computer center for updating, well, creating resumes, getting email accounts, looking for jobs, looking for English classes, and so forth. 21st century collections emphasize things like popular fiction, nonfiction which focuses on do-it-yourself, health, current topics like that. And there is preferred access by many people to eBooks and digital count, content resources. Computer access and technology. People want ample access to Internet and other software on computers. People want access to library resources and content in their own accounts through mobile apps on these devices. Library spaces need to be restructured and repurposed to accommodate community engagement roles. So in newer libraries, there is less space allocated for shelves of books, and spaces more flexible, as well as furnishings to support learning and discussion in different configurations. Children's services. There's a refocusing of lib, of the, of many libraries' youth collections and programs to support discovery and development in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. This down configuration is reflected in a number of school curriculums. Our challenges going forward. The library building will be 60 years old in fiscal year 15. Our last renovation of public spaces was 25 years ago. We have obvious space limitations, and there's uncertainty about available funds and council priorities. Our opportunities going forward. The report shows that the library is highly valued as a local resource, and I'd refer you particularly to pages 38 and 39 of the needs, of the needs assessment report. Residents have expressed a desire for library improvements, and particularly space planning for future development. So many of the comments have to do directly or indirectly with space, you know, space in different configurations for different kinds of activities and so forth. We have library staff who can work together to affect and support change. Again, briefly, our, our collection assessment is ongoing. We're refining and refocusing collections to facilitate access and make optimal use of existing space. We're doing a lot of aggressive weeding right now because we have the staffing to do it. We're, we're seeking a more versatile and attractive ILS integrated library system for patron convenience and staff efficiency. And we've done a lot of research, actually, into different kinds of systems, so we're educating ourselves in that regard. It's important for us to collaborate with the community center and other departments, and that represents opportunities as well. Some of the survey comments request things that are already done by other departments, or already being done by us, or things that could more easily be undertaken by other departments, as well as things that we should consider doing. But the fact that we're so close and really are integrated in many ways with the community center offers a lot of opportunities that standalone libraries just don't have. So that's important, too. Altogether, all in all, the needs assessment report gives us a plan for progress. It gives us a way forward if we are in a position to take advantage of it. So I hope we can. That's my presentation. Thank you.
Ellen, I first would like to thank you for the presentation and for your ongoing leadership in the library.
Thank you.
Always been one of the, I wouldn't say least complained about departments. You know, the people in the community really, really appreciate our library. They like the library, and, and they like the variety of programming that you do there.
Thank you.
So I thank you for that, that leadership. I also want to thank you for really embracing the idea of a needs assessment over the last year, and recognizing that it's, it's a positive step to look at what the community really thinks about things, and, and kind of where libraries should be looking to go in the, the modern age, because things are changing all the time, evolving. And, and I think that you embraced that request and, and did it with gusto, and I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate the fact that you started us on that path, and we had a really good, experienced consultant to work with. So it ended up being very, very positive and a strong report that I'm happy to endorse.
You mentioned in the report on page seven about the planning for additional space and possibly even issuing RFP for interior space evaluation. I wondered if you have, at this point, done any planning as far as what the desires might be, what your priorities might be for additional space. You obviously, in this presentation, mentioned several opportunities, and I just wondered if you had given any numbers as far as size that you're thinking about?
No, I think-
Have you given any thought to priorities of which of those might come first?
I, I've talked to a number of people who are experienced in this regard, people who work for the county, people who do this kind, architects who do this kind of work for public libraries in particular. And just to get a sense of, you know, what the, the progression had to be, where we had to start. And I think that program of requirements would be an important first step. That's something we would be doing with library staff, but also ideally with a consultant, you know, what really is possible. Well, we, we want something for this, and we want something to be able to do that. And from that, you develop-
So you, so you envision this RFP being more than just looking at the physical space, but also working with the library to help you develop a concept?
Yes, right. Yes. Yes, right. Yes, exactly. That would be the initial RFP.
I think it's important to know, I mean, the ideas that are on page seven, those are just some of the report recommendations, so we haven't exactly decided yet--
Okay.
--to go ahead and do that.
Sure. You mentioned the computer area, which is kind of like a stepchild of the library.
Well, I hope not.
At least, that's my impression. You know, you touched on it lightly in here. I just wondered what you see as the opportunities are there, besides just continuing on the current path?
Well, the online courses and the programming that we're doing there, you know, we're focused on those to a degree. And, you know, I hadn't really thought of other things, specifically that atrium area that's in the middle. We would love to be able to, I mean, it's not, it's not really our area, but it would be great to use it for workspaces for wireless because we have people using wireless, sitting outside before the computer center opens at noon, sitting on the cement and, you know.
I would say it's yours as much as anyone else's.
Well--
But that's between you and Mr.--
Well, yeah. I mean, we haven't claimed the space, but I would love to have workspaces for that area.
Yeah, it's a large area. There are a lot of people that do want the wireless access.
Exactly. More and more, more and more.
Usually, you find them sitting on the floor.
And they use the library, and, you know, they sit on the floor before it opens and sometimes do sit outside. So, that would be great. And actually, there's even been, among the library staff, discussion about putting, you know, some tables outside, you know, that area--
Right.
--that sort of--
Yeah.
--where the walk-around is.
Right.
You'd have space where you could put tables, where people could work on wireless there in nice weather.
Right. And you see people sitting on the sidewalk out there doing that sometimes.
Yes, you do.
And just lastly, I, you know, I know that the computer lab is heavily used. Do you see a need for additional computers there, or do you think we've--
Well, I think we've, in terms of those rooms, we've sort of maxed out on the space. I'm not sure, I mean, if we had more space, yes, we could have more computers.
And we would have more clients if we did that?
Probably. I mean, what my staff, Rebecca in particular, seems to see more people gravitating toward wireless. But still, the use of the computer center is high. I mean, counting the senior room, we have 24 workstations, plus another four workstations in the library, and they're all used consistently. I don't know that those two rooms would allow more computers. I haven't, you know, it's possible.
I was thinking not necessarily where they'd be located, but was it, would there be a--
I think it would be--
A need?
Absolutely. I think they would be used if we had them.
Okay.
And, you know, they've been part of a turnkey system that we hope to continue so that, you know, the maintenance is, it's very efficient and, you know, it's minimal. So--
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
It strikes me that the balance that's going to eventually have to be struck is deciding how much effort to put into kind of decentralization of library services, how much is going to be able to be accommodated within existing space, and if additional space is needed, what that might be. And it strikes me that the whole study of that is the first step, but depending on the answer to that could mean very different things for upcoming budgets.
Agreed.
With the things I mentioned, going from least cost to most cost.
Agreed.
And I seem to recall, I'm not sure if I recall correctly, that when we were looking at the expansion of the, of this building, at some point, we looked at potential expansion of the library, and I seem to recall that putting a second floor on it was not going to be a simple task.
It might not be. There was discussion about that, and anecdotally, I don't know if that's possible, but in talking to a couple of architects, there are ways that you can sort of offset that and--
Basically, hold it up with something coming down outside the existing.
Yeah. I don't remember the term that was used, but yeah, there are ways to do that that I understand or, you know, are you, they're in use.
One other thing that, you know, I certainly think that the report has been helpful in sort of being the, thinking about this in phases, if this was sort of phase one, phase two is sort of looking at what the needs assessment would be and starting to think a little bit about configuration. In addition to expansion up or out, I think as Councilmember Siemens mentioned, you know, there may even be expansion in to reclaim some of the interior space into the library, reconfiguring some of those areas so that you maybe do some of the things that are more common in 21st century libraries in terms of decentralizing, book checkout and things like that, which then gains some additional space within the library itself. So, it's--
Which would be preferable to adding on.
Certainly be cheaper. Certainly would be cheaper, probably, than trying to build a platform or something like that to accommodate a second floor if that's structurally what we had to do to claim a second floor.
Yeah, there are ways that, there are ways that you can use the existing space. For instance, we have this sort of massive, almost massive circulation desk that we've had forever, since before I worked at the library. And you can have, you know, much smaller checkout stations. You can use handheld tablets to help people do reference and so on and so forth. So, if it turned out not to be feasible to have a new addition, there are still ways of reconfiguring the staff we have, you know, certainly renovating it, making it look better and more functional.
So, is the, is the next potential step to just basically bring people in to do evaluation and planning, and that's a relatively inexpensive step?
Don't know yet how expensive it would be. I think we would, I think one of the reasons why Ellen has done a great job of sort of teeing this up a little bit is that it seems like a natural first step. It seems like the report has galvanized some of the community and other feedback that we've heard around, you know, we need to do something with our space. And the question is now just what? And I think that doing some sort of needs assessment or getting a better idea about what the options would be might be a step in fiscal year 15, setting up in '16, a question on, you know, should we go ahead and implement now that we've got some scenarios or some options and probably some cost figures as well? '16 could be thinking about what, you know, what would be feasible to physically go ahead and do.
Okay. Thanks. Do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. One thing I'm not clear on, you were talking about a needs assessment that has been done.
Yes.
And you were just talking about doing a needs assessment.
I apologize. The needs assessment she was referring to is actually the visioning report that was, that was done. So, the needs assessment that I was talking about is more how many square feet of library space would be most optimal for the kinds of customers and the location of our current library.
This is the program of requirements, I think, that I've heard.
Yeah. Typically, in architectural design, you start with the customer's program of what they need.
Right.
I'm concerned whether you would do that program in the context of the physical space that you have now, as opposed to sort of saying, let's ignore the constraints of the space we have now, and just say, what are the needs that we see, that we want for our ideal, you know, library? Not ideal with unlimited amount of money, but within the context of limitations on funds, but certainly ignoring the context of the constrained physical space, which is what I think you would want to do.
That's definitely, we want to see what's possible.
Right.
And then what if, if we have to, and that would also involve, I don't know if I mentioned this, bringing in a structural engineer--
Yeah.
--to see, as part of this, this first step, to see what is possible. And it, you know, we may have to modify the plan.
Oh, yeah. No, I understand.
The realities of budget constraints.
It's a feedback loop. As you get information, you go back and start over and change your program--
Certainly.
And can keep doing that through until you come up with something that's feasible.
Exactly.
In terms of space, a building on top of what you have would be the most difficult.
Certainly be the most expensive.
Yeah. But it seems to me we have this giant hole in the ground, which, where we park cars, and the cars don't need sunshine. All they do is get rained on out there, or snowed on. Why not have the structural engineer look at building an expansion of the library over top the parking lot?
Of the parking garage.
Which is, you know, nobody's idea of an aesthetics. I gather that it was built that way because we could only spend so much money on the community center.
Yeah, that's true.
We ran out. That would be a far cheaper way to go than trying to do something on top of the existing building.
Probably. And I would think a structural engineer would look at all the options, you know.
Yeah. Well, yeah.
And that would, that's a good idea. I mean, an interesting idea.
Yeah. Changing the subject a little bit, do we, do you, and I presume that you do, have a notion of who your patrons are divided, you know, sorted out by, say, whether they're city residents or from outside our city?
At this point, the vast majority of them are city residents. In terms of the people who check out books, who have library cards, we've always had some users who were non-residents, but a couple of years ago, when the council was, when there was a need to reduce funding for some things--
Yeah.
--it was decided that we should charge people who lived outside Tacoma Park the equivalent of what residents pay in taxes to support the library. So, for a Montgomery County resident, that's $37 a year. For PGRDC, that's $60 a year. So, we did lose some of those people. There are still some that come and pay. Anybody can come to library programs. That's something else.
Right. Those are up there.
But, yeah, certainly by far, I mean, the amount of, the number of people who live outside the city who have library cards and borrow is, you know, is really small compared to--
Are there any age cohorts that you feel are underserved by our library in the city?
Not that I could identify offhand. I mean, the recreation department serves seniors in a way, and of course, they're right, you know, almost adjacent to us. They serve seniors in a way, in ways that would be difficult for us to do. You know, we try to invite them in, and they do have, you know, the computers over there for which they don't have to pay for printing. No, not really, not significantly.
Okay. Good. There are competing libraries, the one just down on Cedar, is it Cedar Avenue?
Yes, just on Cedar.
Then the district, of course, the one over in Long Branch and elsewhere. Do those libraries literally compete with us, or are they just simply serving a whole different population, or are they different kinds of libraries?
No, I don't think they're different kinds of libraries, and I don't know that they would see themselves as competitive. I think they serve their, you know, their neighbor, their neighborhoods, their communities in the same way we do. Yeah, I'm not sure if that answers your question. I also wanted to mention, we have for years delivered books on a monthly basis to, I want to say Tacoma Towers, but it's not that, the residence facility that is--
Victory Towers.
Victory Towers, right. So, we do deliver books there, and we have for a long time.
We're talking about this, the atrium space--
Mm-hmm.
--where the computer rooms are. And it's always sort of been puzzling to me that we have that large sort of space in the middle between the activity rooms that is sort of just an intersection. It's not, you know, it's for people. It's big enough almost to have electric cars going through there. And it just doesn't serve any purpose at all. I understand that from a design, architectural point of view, it's an aesthetic thing to give, so that there's plenty of light into the side, all the rooms around it, but it just seems to me, given the extreme premium you have on your space, that something that we could do in the interim between, until we can get to a physical, a new additions expansion, a physical expansion, that overhauling that space and making it into a part of a library so that it really is your domain would be something that we ought to give some consideration to.
Sure.
Rather than just sort of having, it's sort of like a no man's land right now.
I think Suzanne knows the answer to this, but I think originally, it was conceived of as, it was, it was going to have like a reception area, but they got rid of that idea. So, that's why it's so empty, right?
Yes, you're right.
Okay.
Okay.
Or not.
But we'll take it.
There's a lot of other stuff that I could ask questions about here.
But you're not going to.
But I'm not going to.
Please feel free to stop by and ask a lot more questions.
Sure. I know you would, you would sincerely welcome that, and I'll take you up on it at some point.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. The next one we've got is Public Works.
I know, I know.
How do I close this out?
We started.
I'm not sure. No, you can't use that. You have to use this. I'm not.
It looks like it's good on the screen.
And we've already talked about that space. What? We've already talked about that space.
I can't get my two cents.
You had your ten cents.
The rest of us were here. If Tim and Jared, they want to--
So, let's get it on.
Is this all of our technology down for the night?
Yeah.
Didn't pay a bill or what?
For some reason, it's not working through these monitors.
Hmm. Is this out there for the--
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, we could move out there if we wanted to, or read it off the printouts. I'm thankful that it was working for the presentations on Tuesday night.
Oh, you are?
No, I'm thankful that they were working.
That's all I'm saying. You were thankful to see that.
Before appearances, yeah.
All righty, I will jump right in. Our mission, crafted over years, we're basically responsible for the general overall maintenance of city-owned property and equipment. In addition to that, we provide services like trash and recycling collection, as well as seasonal services such as leaf and snow removal. Let's hope we don't get another storm to practice on come Sunday night. And then we also provide emergency services, clean up for storms and whatnot. And we are the hub for most, but not all, of the environmental programming within the city. And lastly, I didn't include it on this, but we also provide permitting and oversight for utilities and others doing work in the city right away. I wanted to kind of, this is my attempt to quantify, a little snapshot of a little bit of what we do. It was fun kind of quantifying and coming up with some of these numbers. We have about 31 miles of streets in the city. Thanks to council's decision in earlier years, 90% of those streets are rated good or better. None are rated poor or below. You may recall that we significantly increased the amount of money we spend on street resurfacing. Half a million dollars annually goes into the street upkeep. We have--
And a reminder that we did that at the same time that we lost our state HUR money--
Right.
--which used to pay for that.
Right. Slightly, yeah, slightly bad timing. Based on the tool design study that was done several years ago, we about have about 141,000 linear feet of existing sidewalks. That's the equivalent of just about 27 miles. I redid the number several times because I was just shocked that our sidewalk miles are close to the street miles. Most of that, of course, is because many of the streets have sidewalks on both sides. We've been actively working since 2010 on ADA, Americans with Disability Act, compliance for upgrading our sidewalks. So, they're-- our sidewalks, so they're able to be used by all in the community, and we're about 58% through that process. We have since 2011 added 28,000 linear feet, just about five miles, of new sidewalks. Some of those areas include Lee Avenue, the Community Center, major project in New Hampshire Gardens, Jackson Avenue, both the 73 and 7500 blocks, and smaller projects in Prince George's Avenue and Hilltop. And just a couple of numbers related to our stormwater services, 668 inlets and 17 miles of stormwater pipes and culverts. Doesn't include some of our stormwater and other infrastructure facilities. Facilities-wise, building-wise, 85,000 square feet of buildings. You see the split out there. Obviously, the largest, most prominent building is this community center and library, followed by Public Works, about a third of the size, and Hefner. I haven't included the New Hampshire Avenue Rec space in this calculation because it is a space we do not own, but of course, we do program and maintain. Gardens, playgrounds, and trees, about 60 garden areas have been ever increasing year to year throughout the city. Seven city playgrounds, 4,000 city-managed trees. Now, this number is a little bit old. It's based on a 2001 inventory plus the subsequent plannings we've done annually since that. The City Arboretum will be updating our inventory in the next year or two, so we'll have another round of tree counting that'll be coming up. In vehicles and equipment, I particularly was interested in showing kind of where we've come over the past decade or so. Currently, we have about 81 vehicles in the fleet. About 17% of those are hybrid vehicles, and about 24 pieces of mobile equipment. Just by comparison, in 2000, we had 62 vehicles, no hybrid vehicles, and about 19 pieces of mobile equipment. And of course, those vehicles use fuel and drive, and that shows you a picture of in 2013, we used about 76,000 gallons of fuel, 51,000 in gas, and 25 in diesel, and we drove over 750,000 miles. Compared to 2000, where we had about a little over 47,000 gallons of fuel used and recorded about 520,000 miles. A lot of that is as a result of the decisions for the take-home vehicles related to police cars, and the police's love of locations north and west of here. Our measures of success, they're a little, at times, a little bit harder to quantify, but in particular, the physical conditions of those assets, the buildings, the equipment, and the infrastructure. We've made some significant improvements over the past years in building renovation. This building, of course, in 2006 and '07, and the Public Works Facility upgrade in 2011 substantially improved our building condition. I already mentioned the efforts that the council has worked on with relating to the street improvements and conditions, and now the past few years, we've been working hard on sidewalk improvements. I will also say that the quality of the equipment that we have in the city has just jumped logarithmically improved from when I first started working here 20-plus years ago, where we had 20-year-old trucks. I mean, we've got good vehicles, good equipments. We go through snowstorms now. We don't expect to lose vehicles in use, so we've really, we've done ourselves a service by upgrading and really sticking to an equipment replacement schedule, and both within the police fleet as well as in Public Works and administrative vehicles. I think we've got decent, very decent infrastructure and good quality vehicles.
We don't expect to lose vehicles in storms unless it's snow again.
Right. Another personal way I measure success is whether I get everything done that I said I was going to do in the budget year. So that's an effort to plan and complete what we've identified each year as our goals. The percentage of waste that we continue is to decline in terms of what we're sending to the incinerator. I just pulled together some numbers. I don't have the, on the sheet here, but in 2000, or 1990, for instance, we had 48,000 tons of trash that we disposed of annually. In 2013, that we had just a little over 3,160 tons of trash. In 2000, the midway point, about 4,400 tons of trash. So we're, we've been very successful in terms of continuing to reduce the percentage of trash that we incinerate.
You went from 48,000?
48,000 in 1990, prior to any recycling programs.
Down to 3,160 tons now.
And I'm sorry, Darrell, what was that, what was, you said there was a 2000?
4,400 tons in the year 2000.
Wow.
Comparatively in recycling, and this is interesting, you have to really kind of be willing to jump into the can to kind of get this, but in the year 1990, we recorded 1,162 tons of recycling collection. And that was in the early days of our program. We had started paper, and we added bottles and cans to that. You may all remember the magnets that we distributed, so people would know the difference between the tin cans and the aluminum cans. And 2000, we were up to 1,521 tons of recyclables collected. Now, in 2013, we're actually just below that, 1,489 tons of recycling was collected in 2013. Doesn't mean our program is less successful. It's more a reflection of the change in the quantity, quality of the, of products and materials. We've gone to a plastic society. We don't have the glass and metal cans that we used to have. I mean, most sodas that we drink these days is out of a plastic bottle, not a glass bottle. The weight of aluminum cans as well as tin cans has been significantly reduced, so that aluminum can from 1990 weighed a lot more than the aluminum can from today. So most of that is a reflection not of lesser participation. In fact, our participation remains incredibly high, but more a reflection of the cost savings associated with production, manufacture, and transportation of products to the grocery store shelves. So you really see a lightening of the weight of those types of materials. In terms of another measure of success is our goal towards implementing our watershed implementation plan, a federal and state requirement for our stormwater management. In addition to the annual system cleaning and TV inspection that we do, we've also started a new program with the Center for Watershed Protection, looking at illicit discharge, and we've been focusing on the Maple Avenue corridor. And as you've seen recently, we've greatly expanded the number of biofiltration facilities that we've constructed. We're up to about 34 throughout the city. And we've planned these both as individual projects that you see in the budget each year, but we're also taking a look at any time we're doing construction, be it a sidewalk project or even our road resurfacing program, taking a look at where those opportunities are for us to put a little bit of biofiltration here and there. So we're trying to just continue to nip away at it, as well as in our major planning campaigns. We want to continue to reduce energy use in city facilities. Again, some numbers. In 1996, the three main city facilities, that's this building, the Public Works Facility, and Hefner, used just over 700,000 kilowatts, kilowatt-hours of power. In 2000, it was just slightly increased to 714,000 kilowatt-hours of power. And in 2013, we used 658,000 kilowatts of power. Now, that by itself and alone would show that we've reduced our energy use, but you need to also keep in mind that we've expanded our space, we've expanded our staff. So what we've been able to do is not only reduce, but keep up with the growing expansion. With the community center renovation, we just about doubled the space in the community center. The Public Works renovation was about 10 or 11% space increase. So we've been increasing the size and managing additional programs, but continuing to reduce our energy use. In the mid-'90s, we went through the first generation of lighting upgrades and energy improvements. When this facility was renovated, we went through the next round of energy improvements, and we're now looking at our third generation of energy improvements. I walked the energy company that we've hired to do the lighting upgrades, based on the energy audit around today. So we'll be doing now our third round, and we'll now be going to an LED lighting structure for many of the fixtures. You'll see, hopefully in May, this building, well, I mean, this particular room will be showing LED technology in the lighting, which will be a major improvement in energy use, as well as an improvement in light quality. So we're, we've been very successful in our energy reduction program since the mid-'90s, and we just continue to make progress. And we want to meet or exceed the community's expectation for service, and the kind of way we measure that is by feedback, by callers and emails and interactions with the community, and responsiveness to residents' issues. I probably should have split this up into several slides, but in the interest of trying to be concise, I just wanted to highlight some of the larger projects that we've been working on in recent history. We've identified some of those just based on a portion of the budget that we use to accomplish them, and others are included in here because they're going to be major projects moving forward in this year and next year and into the future. Our environmental programming continues to be kind of a cornerstone of the work that we do. I've mentioned our stormwater management program. Our goal is to exceed our state and federal mandates. We've got 34 bio-retention facilities that are serving a drainage area of almost 32 acres. We're on track to meet and in fact exceed the state requirements for biofiltration and stormwater management. We've also completed 460 linear feet of stream bank restoration, and who thought there were stream banks in the city? I mean, Park and Planning maintains the Sligo Creek and the Long Branch Stream Bank. We don't have any direct management or responsibility for those, but our stormwater facilities and structures are really our stream bank restoration. There are portions of stream banks, most notably recently, the work we did in Circle Woods, that really revitalized and reduced erosion. We've got major plans in, that we're continuing to work through, what Sligo Mill and Poplar Mill in the southern portion of the city, and we've been working very hard to try finding, to make, find funding to make those a reality. We've been involved in continuing to look at ways to improve waste reduction. Our most recent part of that was our food waste composting program. We've got two sections of the community that are currently involved in the composting program. It's covering about 70% of the city, and it's our goal to expand that citywide as funding and programming allows. In addition to our energy reduction plan, we're also focused on onsite generation, so we're currently generating about 100 kilowatt-hours of electricity annually through our solar panels on this building and the Public Works Facility, as well as the energy savings we're realizing from our geothermal system at the Public Works Facility. So it provides over 20% of our electricity use from onsite solar generation. And probably the biggest piece that will take us into the future is this development of our Sustainable Energy Action Plan, and the cornerstone of getting that started is hiring our sustainability coordinator, and we're currently at over 100 applicants for that position, so we've got our job cut out for us in calling through, and we've got some absolutely fantastic experienced people who have applied for this position, so we're really excited about moving that forward.
What's the timeframe on that?
As soon as we can get them, yeah.
Soon.
Soon, yeah, right, in a word.
We're going to try to get through the applicants as quickly as possible because we know certainly before the end of the fiscal year, we want to have that person up and running, because we've already identified some immediate things they can work on, plus we want to hear what they have to think as well.
I don't think we have to identify the absolute best one out of the lot, though, if we find one that's good for the job.
Yes.
Second program, Flower Avenue Green Streets, that probably could be a discussion in and of itself. I just suffice it to say, we've got, this is the first time ever, a comprehensive green street plan, that we're, we've got our hands around over about a mile of a street and far more community that it's impacting. It's a multifaceted program to address pedestrian safety, stormwater quality, transit access, lighting, traffic calming, improving the aesthetic and the experience and that sort of feel of the neighborhood. And we've actually added yet another piece to that, which is a water main upgrade. We're in coordination with WSSC, who's told us they were planning a water main replacement project on Flower Avenue due to the age of the pipes and the current quality of the pipes, which would have greatly delayed our moving forward, and we're kind of in the standoff about, we wait for them, or do we go forward and then they have to fix it all back up again. So at least in the first time I've ever experienced, they've agreed to allow our design engineers to develop their water main replacement project. It's going to be an integrated part of the program. WSSC will pay for that design, pay for that construction portion, and we'll be the lucky folks who get to sort it all out and make sure everybody's happy at the end.
We're not going to pave the road before they dig up?
What's that?
I say, we're not going to pave the road before they dig up.
We hope not to pave the road before they come back in. We've asked repeatedly whether Washington Gas wants to come on board, but they've told us they've got no plans of updating gas service in that area, so hopefully within, we won't find, hear from them within a couple of years after the completion.
Can we get them to sign a dotted line that they're not going to come back within like 20 years to do that?
Right, for what that's worth. And a particular thing that I'm quite impressed with staff's effort on is our, what we've been able to do towards receiving grant awards for this project, and we're currently up almost to $2 million towards the project, $1,905,000 from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation and the Transportation Alternatives Program, and small funding from the Chesapeake or the blank, I don't know, Chesapeake Bay Trust. So we've done some great work in terms of coordinating our project with funding sources. Our sidewalk and traffic calming programs, these were some really interesting numbers. I mean, I've been up to this to my eyeball since this program started, and it was really nice to sit back and really kind of try to capture some of what we've been doing. In terms of new sidewalk design and construction, we spent over $1 million, almost $150,000 since 2011. I've said before, the amount of sidewalk, about 28,000 linear feet or five miles of sidewalk we've created with that program. It comes out to about $41 per linear foot. I mean, that's not really a good way to talk about sidewalks. You don't have a linear foot of sidewalks, but just think of every foot of length of sidewalk. It costs about $41 with the new program to put it in place. In terms of our ADA work, and again, I say we're about 58% through the city, and I failed to note, though I did on the slide, that that does not include sidewalks along state highways and only includes sidewalks along city streets, because those are the ones that we had evaluated by the Tool Design Group some years ago. Just a little over $2 million has been spent on sidewalk compliance since 2010, and that breaks out to about $26 per linear foot of sidewalk retrofit. Now, I want to add in these cost figures, what you don't see, I mean, it clearly includes the design cost, clearly includes the construction, but it also includes everything else. Every time we had to remove a tree, plant a tree, build a retaining wall, deal with somebody's landscaping, and just numerous other program costs that were, were built into this. And we have tried to make it as painless for the residents as possible as we come through their neighborhoods and interrupt their, their day for several days, try to make it as least impactful as possible. So there is a cost associated with trying to return things to their natural state, so that they can hardly tell that we were there. In terms of traffic calming and design and installation, since 2010, we spent about $350,000. Some of those projects included New Hampshire Gardens, Hilltop Avenue, the Ritchie and Oswego Traffic Calming, Prince George's Avenue, and Erskine Street. In Erskine, we're up to the design and hope to get to construction this spring. And then the SafeGrow implementation, which is a program that, it's a law in its early stages. March 1st is the first deadline for commercial applicators to
Saturday.
require to follow the law. We've sent a letter out to all 171 registered pesticide applicators identified through the Maryland Department of Agriculture. We know that there's national and regional interest in this. People are watching this. We want to make sure we roll this out in a sensible way, and so we're very excited about what we've developed so far. Working together with Beyond Pesticides, we've developed what we think is a very nice website, and if you haven't had a chance to look at it yet, I encourage you to do so, our SafeGrow website on the webpage on the city's website. So we have all the information that you need to know for compliance right on that page. We have the list of restricted pesticides and additional educational information. We've also developed a logo, kind of to brand our program, and as I mentioned, we've notified commercial applicators of the law.
Maybe somebody could send us the link to that, just so that we remember to look at it.
Yeah.
I'm looking for the reminder as much as the address.
Jesse, send you. Jesse, in terms of trends, I'm, you know, boy, far be it for me to ask for trends, but this was what I thought of when I was compiling this slide. You know, the community interest in sidewalks seems strong. I don't know how long it will continue. It's a relatively new program, and we've had a lot of activity now. Whether or not our activity will increase or decrease into the future, it's really hard to know. These can tend to be divisive topics in neighborhoods, so it's really unknown. We established the process through the council ordinance in 2011. We received two requests in 2012, eight requests in 2013. So far, we've received one request in 2014. I didn't include Ward 6 sidewalks in there because they were kind of pre our process, and it was kind of where we cut our teeth on new sidewalks in the city. Traffic calming requests, kind of a similar layout. Traffic calming requests, kind of a similar layout. We've always had the ability to do speed humps, but what we're trying to do is really integrate into a broader way our traffic calming and make it broader and sensible. So three requests in '12, three requests in '13, and two requests to date in 2014. There appears to be some funding available for both state and Pepco for energy efficiency. We were in a similar situation in 1994, and we're able to capitalize on that. So we hope to do that again in terms of bringing efficiency into our facilities, as well as helping the commercial and residential sectors of the city. And that's really what's going to be critical for our sustainability coordinator and our energy action plan and moving forward. Mentioned our food waste program. We hope to expand that citywide, and there'll be funding laid out in the FY15 budget to make it increase across the city to that additional 30% of the residents that are not currently covered. And technology, for us, the biggest use of technology, I'm sure there's a bazillion different ways you can use technology, but right now, what we're thinking about is GPS services to provide real-time vehicle tracking and routing so that people could know where a snowplow is, and we could know where the snowplow is or the leaf collection back or anything else. And we've had some conversations recently with our cell phone provider, Verizon. They're working through Netfleet and have some exciting programs available that, for fairly low cost, might get us well along the way towards using that capability. Some of the challenges going forward, we're looking at new approaches to reach outside our span of control. And when I say span of control, what the city does internally in its own facilities, how do we break out beyond that through the use of incentives and encouragement? And I think the areas where this is most notable is in our Sustainability Energy Action Plan. We're going to try to reach out to those commercial and residential property owners and tenants. Our food wasting program, which, you know, our recycling program is a mandatory program. We haven't laid out our food waste program as a mandatory program. And I know the issue of tree planting on private property has been raised by several council member. And, you know, sort of, we need to take a look at what this will gain us, how this will work out, you know, what the legality and lifetime and overall benefit for this is. So those are some areas where I can see that new approach being thought of. Of course, the implementation of the SafeGrow law, which I've already discussed. In terms of staffing, we've got some interesting challenges. You know, as we continue to work on programs, we have to figure out sort of how we get our technical expertise, whether we contract it out, whether we bring staff in, you know, hire in on staff. So we're continuing to try to find that balancing act of how to get the professional resources that we need to move programs along. I know there's been discussions on the council as to whether or not things are moving fast enough or not, you know? So that all plays into how we work that out. And about 70% of public works employees are what you might call blue collar workers. So we've got kind of an issue on the opposite side, which is it's getting more and more difficult to fill many public works positions in terms of mechanics and laborers and custodians, both in the available pool, as well as, you know, the challenge of attracting folks to work for the city, whereas a mechanic, for instance, you can get paid far more working for a private firm than you can working in the city's garage because they do it based on parts and time. So we had a real challenge in filling our last mechanics. We got a mechanic position that came available. Our other two mechanic positions are well-seasoned employees, been here longer than me, so we'll be facing that again in the no doubt, just not too distant future. And it's just something that I think about quite a bit. It's been mentioned by several other department heads, our facility age and condition. The issues come up with staff space, storage pace, changes in function, energy use, and aesthetics. A library originally built in 1955. I first had heard it was renovated in '68. I understand it also went through renovation in '90. We've also changed the windows out just a couple of years ago. Hefner Park is a building that not too much has been done with. 1959 it was built. CDBG money was used to renovate it in the '90s. Our community center, which doubled in size in the 2006, 2007 era. And of course, the public works facility, which most recently went through the renovation. So how to deal with facilities of varying age, a real mix of equipment and maintenance, and how to continue to try to meet the needs of both the staff and the residents in those facilities. We also, I would say, have a community expectations for levels of service that are beyond standard. Probably once a week, I hear somebody say that's some version of, that's why I pay more taxes to live in Tacoma Park. People really expect a lot. I wouldn't say demand a lot, but I think their expectation is for high-quality services of a very personal nature, and we deal with that day in, day out. Also, how to expand our use of alternative fueled, alternatively fueled vehicles. Obviously, the largest number of vehicles is used by police and public works, and both have real and perceived limitations to what all we can implement. I think we've got, done a good job so far in 70% of our vehicles being hybrid, and the police department has a lion's share of those. But when you're taking a look at large trucks and equipment and trash trucks, as well as pursuit vehicles and patrol vehicles, you have some real issues in terms of getting into alternative fuels. And then lastly, kind of the elephant in the room many times is our failing utility infrastructure. We don't have any responsibility for that, but it surely impacts us in terms of quality of life, city streets, and our ability to coordinate with utilities. We've got major Washington Gas activity that's taken place in the past, and I think they've pretty much done a lot of what they intended to do. We are entering or continuing a phase of incredible amount of WSSC water main and sewer main work that's going to impact numerous areas of the city over the next several years. And then we continue to have an issue with Pepco and the communication companies relative to our utility poles. They've done a huge amount of work in the city in terms of reliability, increasing pole heights, having up pole wires, but what we are ending up with is these dead poles, these double poles, side by side for two years plus, that have yet to be removed. And that kind of leads me to the opportunities section. One of the things I failed to mention on there, and I'm not sure why, is I didn't include streetlight ownership, but I think that is something that continues to be an issue that we should have in the corner of our mind as we move forward, the issue of streetlight ownership. Currently, streetlights in the city are primarily owned and managed by Pepco, and we pay them for the privilege of that ownership. We have about 1,400 streetlights that are Pepco-owned, and we pay about $250,000 a year towards the electricity, as well as the maintenance of those streetlights. Annually, there's an effort in Annapolis to try to make it easier for municipalities to gain more control of some of those lights. We do have some lights within our control in terms of the more lower-level decorative lights that we have in some of our commercial areas. We're looking at both the Flower Avenue project and the Ethan Allen Avenue project at integrating LED lighting technology in the streetlights, and Pepco now has that technology available. And then, of course, the other big issue is whether or not there's a role to be played on city ownership of those streetlights and what that might mean in terms of use of technology, energy reduction, light pollution, and overall service reliability.
I apologize, Darryl. I may have to ask you to conclude because I want to make sure we've got enough time for some questions.
Great. Well, I think the rest of that I've already kind of laid out, you know, use of a technology, our food waste programs, our energy action plans, our ability to capture more money for some of the energy work we did. And I think the city facility issues kind of remain. We have renovation options that are in front of us, and we have potential rebuilding options. And I think there are some acute issues and currently in facilities relative to the police level and staffing constraints. The library director has mentioned the visioning process and the opportunities available there. We have not completed all the work of public works, about the quarter of the space that was left unrenovated. And this building, as we all know, gets heavy and hard use, and we need to look at ways to harden that, improve that, and maintain the aesthetic so that this facility doesn't, you know, get run down over a short amount of time. And then we have the issue of deciding what to do about Hefner Park and the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, both very different issues, but potential opportunities there as well. That is it.
I think you've covered an awful lot of ground in this, and there's a lot of good news in it, and we kind of got to the hard part at the very end. And I think I can just say that it's going to require a lot more thought and a lot more effort to figure out those options. I will say that the, one of the things that I feel like I'm protective of in terms of hardening this building and making it a little more resistant to premature wearing is I'm always trying to be very protective of this room, the periphery in particular, where we don't have an aisle, but people use the edge of the room as an aisle to get by. And the concern, I know at the beginning, was always that the fabric on the wall was going to, was going to wear out first if we continued to do that. And I think we had a system that we thought might work at the beginning that obviously didn't, and it seems like we've given up. And I would encourage us to not give up, but to do something that can deal with protecting that so we don't get the premature wear, just because it's really prone to it.
Sure.
And we see it in here all the time. So I know there are other areas of the building that I don't see as often that may have just as tough issues, if not tougher, but seeing that one all the time, I just constantly am thinking about it. And thinking about things in here, I'll just mention on behalf of my colleagues, I think that anything that we do with dealing with potential lighting changes, and I say this not
They're still going to be bright.
Not very hopeful, but it's like, I know there's TV lights, but it's like, I feel like I'm only, I'm always in a police lineup up here when those lights come up.
And that does make you nervous?
No, it's just, it's like, it's much easier to look down and avoid that problem than to look up. And if I wore glasses all the time, it would be worse. But I think you've given us a lot of good information, and it's good to hear that in some cases, this was pulling together information that you hadn't had the opportunity to pull together before, and maybe makes it a little bit easier for you to get the 30,000-foot picture of what you're doing as opposed to just being immersed in it all the time. And maybe we'll get somewhere on streetlights soon.
Maybe.
I just had one rhetorical question and just food for thought, and that is, with our difficulty that we anticipate in finding mechanics, might we think about establishing some trainee positions with contracts so that we can help the more senior mechanics that we have now, we can help the, have them pass on some of their knowledge and training to some young people, and then lock people in with some contracts that they have to give back to the city, you know, for a period of time for that training? Just an idea.
Yeah, just a second. What Terry is saying, I do think that it's, from what I heard you say, it seemed like the question about being able to hire the blue collar people who can be paid far more in the private sector, which I understand, seems to be one of your most, one of your bigger worries. And so we're going to need to have some suggestions for solutions in the budget if you want. I think it'd be good to see some, something there. I don't know what the solution's going to be. That's probably what you're worrying about. But gosh, without the mechanics, we're in deep trouble, you know? It's kind of like the low-tech jobs are the ones that really keep the world running. I don't have a lot of questions for you because I find that you and your people are always so accessible and answer my questions all the time, and I'm so satisfied generally with the work that you guys do and how fast you do it, that I don't know what else there is to say. I'm excited about the possibility of maybe being able to make some progress on buying our Pepco poles. You mentioned that there's 1,400 in the city that are owned by Pepco, but in the testimony I gave to the House of Delegates recently, I think the figure was 1,735.
Well, then, that's probably right.
What?
That's probably right, and my memory numbers are on
Seven, well, I haven't, was it 1,735 was the figure that you wrote for the testimony? So that's the correct number.
That's the right number.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Good job.
And I think you're right about the higher than the normal expectations of the level of service that's expected from public works. And there's no better example than people freaking out over a little bit of slippery road on whatever morning it was this week. And the expectation that by 8:00 in the morning, that would all be taken care of, when, I don't know what time it started, but probably fairly
Five and six.
Late in the morning. And so I think that it just shows that the people's expectation is that the city's streets will be clear way in advance of other areas.
One last question. Mike Welsh gave a talk last fall to the HORT Club, in which he talked about well over 100 locations that Public Works is responsible for. But here, I see you talking about 60 garden areas. I figure maybe both numbers are right, but there's a difference there. You know what he was talking about?
Yeah, I've probably gathered some together. For instance, you may count individually gardens around this facility, for instance, and I would probably include them as a single figure versus his multiple figure.
He was talking, including the biofiltration areas as well.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Darryl. Next, we have a double dip. We have both our information, technology, and systems, as well as our communications. And we're going to try to, as best as possible, get both of them in. And so I may ask both of them, who I've, who I know have lots of information to convey, to be as efficient as possible when they're delivering their information. First up is our Information Technology Director, Abel.
Okay. Good evening. Thank you for coming by and listening to us, tell you about our departments. I want to talk to you about the Information Technology Department. You can see our mission statement, you all have, you have this in front of you. Again, the mission statement, we've been working on, and we, every time we bring it out, we design it or change it a little bit. But basically, you know, we're here to provide support for our staff. There are some things that we consider our corp, but we are really here to support our city staff do their work. The measures of success, I kind of broke it out into three.
Hey, do we need to
Get his man to Oh, yeah, let's do that.
He's not too well-versed in technology.
Technology's challenged me today. It won't be the first time, it won't be the last time.
Sorry.
You know, and again, what I, what I wrote down here in the measures of our success, while we rely on metrics for up times and things like that, and we have a server that just monitors uptime for our equipment, we consider ourselves pretty successful when other departments do good. When, when the other departments function and their services are running and they're able to provide good service to the community, we think that we've also done good. And I can show you here what I did. I split it up in the public safety area. We know we're providing good customer service when police communications run without interruptions and, and the services that we provide and the county services. And by that, I mean, the county database and the county dispatching software is what our police department uses. But there's also some services that are independent, like the state criminal records and, and databases associated with the national crime records and the FBI, that they're independent of what the county's doing. So when investigators and patrol officers can communicate with those databases and use them to investigate the crimes, that's something that IT does. The dispatching and the management of the communication, a lot of that is done by county servers, and we connect to the county servers. The, also, with city staff, I wrote down, we know we've done well when email is flowing without interruption and the staff can communicate with the outside world, and also when the outside world can communicate with us. Email is becoming a mission-critical component of IT. I also I also think that when the financial software used by staff for all the functions, the payroll, purchasing, the budgeting, the billing, when all that is working as designed, you know, I feel that we've done good, and our staff is also doing good. A big component of what our staff does is the communication, the, the programming, the prepared by, and, and broadcast by, by our cable TV channel. When those servers are working as designed and the, the, the content is being viewed as scheduled, it means that our network is working correctly, that we are handing off our production to the county so they can send it to the providers, the cable providers, and also that we are streaming like we're supposed to, and our streaming server is working like it's supposed to. Another measure of success, then, area is within the IT department, I said that we know we've been successful when the components that are, are core hardware, the routers, the switches, gateways, all the appliances run as designed and perform uninterrupted. When application service used by the various departments for storage, the different applications like rent control and things like that, when they perform as designed, we also think that we've done a good job and we're, we're doing what we're supposed to. We all, sometimes when, when updates and applications don't run as designed, we, we, we kinda self-inflict our own downtime. But if the, if those things happen without consequence or any downtime, we know we've been successful and we can keep on going. Microsoft is a big contributor to that. They're always releasing updates and we have to keep up. Also, when network security components work as designed, and the city systems are not compromised by outside intruders, we think, you know, we know we've been successful. Our, our network is safe and no intrusions or, or no, no incidents of data loss. I did something similar to what Daryl did, by the numbers, where we put an inventory of the servers, the components, the equipment, all the laptops that, just the inventory of all the equipment that we are responsible for.
Switch pay?
Yeah. I need some staff members to help me keep this up with.
Should we have all these presentations on the screen, on the little screen that I've got? None of the presentations showed up on it until about two minutes ago, and all of a sudden, they're there?
Very good. Do you wanna share with everybody?
So, some, so something changed.
Something changed.
There's a little one here.
Just, just, just a little, you know, the little seven-inch screen.
But not the big one.
All right, we'll move right along. I can count those for you. We, we, we did a little survey, and we're always growing. So, you see there, I, I counted forty-five network components, and by that, I mean, the modems, the routers, switches, firewall appliances, things that are responsible for our infrastructure and for our networking. We also counted a hundred and ninety-one computers. Most of those are Windows Seven. We do have some, a handful of XP and some Linux. And usually, the XPs are running software that will not support Windows Seven, or a hardware that doesn't support Windows Seven. So, when they're replaced, it'll be a Windows Seven machine. We haven't gone to Windows Eight, and that's a industry stand, industry overall feeling. I, I counted seventy-two servers, and that's always changing. Our servers are a mixed environment. We, we have a lot of open source servers. We also have a lot of Windows, and the Windows runs the gamut of two thousand, two thousand eight, two thousand three. You see the count on the tablets and the iPads and the laptops. Laptops are usually staff-specific, but the biggest number of those are for training. We do our training on laptops, and we have a moving laptop lab where we, I think there's like fifteen laptops there, and we can just set them up wherever and we can do our, our training. I did count fifteen tablets slash iPads, and a lot of those iPads, they're the smaller ones, and they're in the police department, and they use those for their investigations. And they're more mobile than a lot of the other staff. The printers and copiers that we support, you see there forty-seven, eleven of those are copiers. The others are, I call them rogue printers, just printers everywhere, different versions. We do have, we standardize on Brother and Rico. Those are the two printers that we use, the brands. You see the, the help desk calls projected there. Forty-two thousand, forty-two hundred is a, an annual estimate. We are averaging about a thousand to fifteen hundred every quarter. So, I just did a little, you know, we're getting better at documenting that, so I'm thinking a lot of the numbers have gone up. If you see previous numbers on that, they were lower. When I talk, when I, when I talk about the, the lower part here, where systems, systems managed, I wanted to give council and folks an idea of what IT does, or how often we touch the everyday lives of staff. If, if you were a staff member that got hired today, and you're gonna report tomorrow, you would probably come into one of our doors where IT programmed them to open at eight o'clock. If you came in earlier, you'd be out. After you enter the building, you'd probably get on an elevator, and that elevator is also programmed to work between, to run between eight and five. Soon after that, you'd probably end up in the HR office, and you'd get a little orientation. But we, eventually, would bring you over to our ID picture-taking place, where IT would take your picture and would give you an ID with your door access configuration or, or permissions already there. And I've, usually, what we require is a, a piece of paper with what kind of access you need, what, to what departments are you gonna be going, and what doors you're gonna be using. From there, we also set you up with your login. IT is responsible for logins for the network and for email systems. The, one of the, one of the IT specialists would show you how to use the phone. We, we sit down with you and we give you your access code for long distance. We also show you how basic function of, of our phone system, and also your initial logins. If you got to your office, you have a computer that IT put together, we loaded software, and it keep on going. The, the, the IT department is also responsible for, if you're gonna use the gasoline dispensing system, we would enter your ID and, and maintain that. From there, you would have to access the gates at Public Works. We enter that, that kinda, that kinda thing. If you were a resident and you came in, you would also encounter IT activity by the minute you got to the window to pay some money or to pay for one of the services in the, the finance office. IT's configured the swipe reader and the software that, 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 that's in there. The, the payment would all be processed. The finance staff doesn't have to actually physically touch your, your credit card. It's all done by you, and the provider takes care of the whole, the rest of the process. Similar in the library. IT is responsible for maintaining the user phone, or that, those computers that, that do the desktop sharing there. We also manage and, and host the li, the current library system, the patron database. If you were gonna use the IT, the computers in the computer lab, your library card gets authenticated and gets processed by a server that we maintain also, which lets the systems know your age group, your access, whether you've, your current on your fines and things like that. There's a couple more systems there, and I'd be willing to answer questions of, of those other systems that we ma, that we, that we manage. If I go to the next slide, recently, we've completed, completed some of these projects here. You see, the fiber to Public Works was a, a major project for us. This was county fiber that one of their vendors extended for us, and basically, it's from Public Works to the city building. We are responsible for doing the electronics and the equipment needed to, to light up the fiber and to put it in, in action, and that's done at the Public Works Department. Another recently completed project was this wireless access throughout the city building. We've improved the wireless access here at the city building. We've now got an enterprise solution rather than just little access points here and there. And that has been extended over to Public Works and the rec center. So, it's the same system, just the radios have been placed in different locations. Okay, you want me to go to the, the trends or?
Yes.
All right. The, the rest of, the rest of this information is there, and you guys can maybe look, look over it. In, in the trends, one, one thing I can tell you about IT is always changing, and some of the trends that I, that I, that I, that I list here are the more obvious ones, the more, where we get the most interest in. But the BYOD stands for Bring Your Own Device. There's a lot, there's a big, there's been a big surge in mobility and the computing, and folks wanna be able to bring their device, connect, and do all the, that's all the work that they want, all the connectivity they want with their device. Thank you. A lot of, there's been a big surge in cloud-based applications, and, hey, look at that.
Abel did that too, right now.
No, Daryl did it. She pushed a button. Oh, Suzanne. We, we also see a, a big, a, a lot of questions from staff wanting to work from home, wanting to work remotely. And, and for the most part, those are the three that I listed as far as trends. Best practices, I know that, again, a lot of the, in the industry, you'll hear about server consolidation and virtualization, and we've been doing a lot of that. We've been virtualizing and consolidating our servers. And that's where you have one large server, but you have many virtual servers running in it. And it does facilitate the generation of those servers. You can quickly generate a, so you can quickly build a server for an application, and you can also move a server if the hardware is failing. The other thing that's, that we've been doing is we've improved our virtual connections to the city network. We've now, we have an appliance, a computer that connects remote people securely, and it's an SSL connection, SSL firewall appliance. We've done a lot, we've also started doing cloud-based off-site backups, and right now, it's our financial software. And that's a, been a big plus because we know that we're redundant there and it's secure. The cloud-based applications, we've started a while back. The first one, the first application that we started using was basically a cloud-based application, was the Success Factors, and that's our, help me out.
HR.
The, it's the HR.
HR performance system.
Soon after that, the recruiting was also started as a, as an off-site, as a cloud-based application. More recently, we've done the Adobe, it's an Adobe Cloud application where you have a full array of the Creative Suite software that is hosted in the cloud, and we can maintain the same version of the application for all the staff, and they can also save and collaborate by storing their content, storing what they come up with in, in the cloud.
I apologize, but I'm gonna have to ask you to go to the last slide so you can get, get through that, because you got, I wanna make sure you get through that.
Challenges?
Challenges and opportunities, yep.
Okay. As, as with a lot of IT organizations, you know, people that are doing IT, security right now going forward is the biggest challenge that I see. How secure, how do we secure mobile devices needing access to our network? Also, security to our existing infrastructure. It's an ongoing challenge. Intruders are always finding new ways to breach our security, so protection from the outside. The technology-related policies and the usage, a challenge is creating and updating, because technology is changing so often, policy also needs to keep up, and, and I find that that's a, that's gonna be a challenge going forward. There's also a challenge in promoting new solutions within the existing structure. You find that people, thank you. I need somebody to help me with that. It's too late now. Opportunities going forward. We are think, we are looking at implementing paperless, more paperless capabilities, especially with our new financial software that's in, that's in the works. The, also, we wanna continue to promote and, and use the imaging initiatives that the city clerk's office has, has, has started. They have actually scanned and, and have imaged a lot of their official records from way back, and I, I don't know the exact dates. But we wanna include human resources, DHCD recreation, the police and Public Works, and have them do some imaging and archiving. And we also wanna continue to, going forward, to find more cloud-based solutions when they make good business sense for the city. And I think I'm, I'm done. It was a nervous attempt at telling you what we do.
Well, I thank you for the presentation. And I was just curious about that last time. For example, with the Adobe products.
Correct.
Is it a financially beneficial for the city to go to that, the cloud-based?
Yes, and I'll, I'll tell you why. I, I find that keeping the software updated is a lot easier if it's coming from one source, and by installing it on the computers that need them. When you do cloud-based, you can also, you just remove the access and you can manage who has it, who uses the application. But the biggest benefit is the, the size of the storage. When you do a lot of this creative things, the, the content could be rather large, so you need to, to have some disk space. But the biggest benefit is also the sharing. If you're cloud-based, you're storing it, you're storing it out in the internet somewhere, on somebody's server. Well, you can determine who you want to share this content with. And if you're collaborating with somebody else, Public Works, or if it's between housing and Public Works, or you've been an outside vendor, you can tell the outside vendor, I always share this on the cloud, this is how you access it, just grab the content, and you can make your changes, save it back in the same place, and I'll, and I, and I can make my changes.
But they, you pay a monthly fee instead of a-
You pay a yearly, it's a yearly subscription.
Or a yearly fee instead of a, a purchase for the product?
Right.
And then you pay for the amount of storage you use?
Yeah. With each subscription, we get a hundred gig of storage.
And can you store things on your personal computer instead of on the cloud if you wanted to?
You could, but then you couldn't share them.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Since I've been here on the city council, I've had my iPhone device, which I've been very pleased with, but you know my story, this chronic problem that I've had of trying to be able to access the city's webmail site on my, on my computer at home. I can get it on the iPhone, but not on the computer. We've had lots of discussions about that, and you've kept me up to date on the technology changes in terms of a particular exchange server that would need to be acquired. I asked this question, not just for myself, but simply in reference to the BYOD, Bring Your Own Devices. So many people now, their personal devices are Apple-based or Google-based, such as the Android mobile phones. And whereas some year, not too many years ago, it was Windows or nothing. And I just sort of was wondering, what direction are we going in with regard to all of that? Everything so far in our system is, is Windows Seven oriented, but is there any need or plan to, to broaden it so that you're, you have, you can serve the Android kind of and Apple-based users?
Well, you know, the, yeah, thanks for asking that. The concept of Bring Your Own Devices, whatever you want to use is good. Now, for cities- Now, for city staff, most of the folks are going to be Windows, because that's what everyone's used to. I can tell you that our creative staff, our members of the media, cable and the web design folks, they're all Mac. And we're going to end up supporting both of them. It's going to be both worlds we're going to have to live in.
Right.
And if you had an iPad or a tablet, you'd be able to do just what you do with your phone with our email system. It's only the laptops that have the issue and the processor there.
Is there a solution for that particular thing?
Probably with the next release.
Next release?
Yeah.
Should I hold my breath or not hold my breath?
I have the same device you have at home, and I'm not holding my breath.
Okay. Honest answer.
Yes.
Okay. But I just, I just think that that's, just curious to see how that, the
Plays out.
Access to different platforms for the city as a whole needs to be developed at some point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just two quick observations. On the BYOD front, I've seen a lot recently about municipal governments, particularly in Maryland, trying to figure out how to make it so that people consolidate down from their work phone and their personal cellphone down to one. And I can understand some of the need to do that since I carry or don't carry two identical devices. And the one that I end up not carrying, if I'm not carrying two, is the city phone. And so I'm looking forward to someday in the future having a better solution for that. I don't know if they could make cellphones with two phone number capabilities, but you know, that would be wonderful. And what was the other one? Oh, the clerk knows about the issues with the Granicus, with the iLegislate, and the fact that it had functionality and usability in 2013 that's totally gone in 2014 and renders it useless. And so we're paying for and have access to something that stopped working.
Wow. Pretty much on my plate, I have to say.
Well, yeah, but still, it's IT-related and it's
Definitely, definitely something, opportunity there.
Thank you, Abel.
Okay.
Thank you.
We've got communications up next, which is a duo of Craig and Alvaro. Alvaro on city TV-related things and Craig on communications.
And they're going to dazzle us with the technology, and they got it up and running on our monitor.
Yeah, I'll be announcing the game, he'll be doing color commentary. So I need to get our stuff up. Are we next, or do we have to load a new one?
Yeah, click X out of this and go to the desktop.
Communications.
Yeah.
All right. We're running a little bit behind, so we're going to breeze through this. Okay. We'll skip the table of contents because they're probably pretty much the same for everyone. Oh, slideshow.
Yeah, he's used to an Apple environment.
This one?
Top, in the middle.
Slideshow, there we go.
Oh, there you go.
From beginning all the way to the left.
From the beginning.
Yeah.
There we go. Table of contents, we've all seen this before. Our mission is to inform, educate, entertain, and engage residents while sharing with stakeholders items of public and cultural interest. We need to tell the residents and stakeholders what we do, why we're doing it, and why they should like us. The department uses resources that strengthen the partnership between residents and city government, that's your social media, that's your newsletter, that's your website. Measures of success, how many followers and interactions do we have on social media? That's your tweets, that's Facebook. The web metrics I get from Google Analytics, that's another big one. Feedback from residents when they email either of us, or they come in and say, we're doing a good job, or we're doing a bad job. The number of hours of original programming. And one thing that I would like to stress with original programming, as my former life as television producer, for every one hour of original television programming you see online, that's multiple hours of production that went into that hour. Another big thing that city TV measures their success with is the amount of organizations they're producing and partnering with. And Alvaro will be able to tell you more about that at the end. And another measure of success is the amount of positive news stories. And we've had a bumper crop this last year because we had the youth voting thing. International news organizations were here, including El Jazeera. And we're getting mentions across the globe for that. More locally or regionally, positive stories, we did compost collection, we were able to leverage that in some really good Washington Post coverage. And then we get a lot of great coverage from Gazette by just developing a good working relationship with them. We help them with their bigger stories, and they cover our things like the Zalea sculpture or our Tacoma Junction RFP. By the numbers, Alvaro's done about an average of 260 hours of original programming every year since 2010. And he's partnered every year with at least 50 other organizations to pretty much produce programming, right? Yep. Our social media audience size is at least 2,500 people, if not more. Our web traffic, you can catch the numbers there. The big takeaway is in the last month, 10,000 individual people came to our website, and they're seeing about 40,000 pages, all told. This is kind of a trend, too. 30% mobile-only, our 30% mobile users, 14% of those are mobile-only. So about 30% iPhone, your phones and tablets, and then 50% of those are phone-only. And the top five popular spots on the webpage, HR careers, recreation, police, this last month, the Tacoma Junction RFP was kind of a, kind of my rocket up the charts guy. And then the Tacoma Park Community Center page. Recent projects and achievements, these guys over at city TV, they covered the live elections, and they've been partnering with the El Tiempo Latino?
Tiempo Latino.
Newspaper. So they've been doing a Spanish-language talk show. And they've been working with some interns from the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Foundation. We launched a brand-new website, redid the look of the newsletter, and that also stretches to like having some consistent placement of calendars and information. So the user experience for the newsletter is much more consistent than it probably used to be. And now we have a social media team on staff, which I will be meeting with tomorrow morning. And we all sit down and we plan our posts for the week, and we reach a much better audience, night and day, how much better things have gotten since those guys have been born. Trends, upgrade city TV to high definition, make all the website designs mobile-ready and accessible. Like our mobile penetration is eclipsing one-third, so it's time. Website and app content centered on metrics and data rather than traditional department structures. Make communications methods accessible to all, like ADA, include closed captioning of live meetings and events. We want to move the newsletter online with an online version kept up to date and linked to additional media. Consistent use of logo fonts and styles across communication methods, that's traditional branding stuff. City TV opportunity to produce live content from anywhere in the city so they can come out live. Application of resident interaction, especially apps for reporting problems or requesting services. And our news available on demand. And that would be, that's more geared towards like video news. Challenges going forward, cable industry changes likely to reduce money and income for municipalities. Difficulty of switching HD while preserving programming for underserved residents and seniors. And there's definitely difficulty of filling in gaps in website content while setting up institutional standards for the long haul and keeping web development data-driven and efficient. The analogy I use when I was in the meeting with managers was, I got to fix the car while I'm driving it. Opportunities going forward, we're going to produce some regular Spanish programming, collaborate on programming with other PEG, what is PEG again?
Public Educational and Government Stations.
And state entities. More production classes for teens and seniors in the media lab, using out-of-house talent to take the municipal website to the next level, using our relatively large social media audience to put soft pressure on organizations to influence outcomes, and a searchable online newsletter. And that's the end.
I just want to modify one thing that Craig said about his analogy around the website, because I know since I've gotten here, I've heard from council members and from some residents about sort of our website in terms of some of the functionality that they'd like to see, online payments, content gaps and so forth. And Craig described the analogy as fixing the car, fixing the plane while driving it. He actually modified that in our meeting, and I think it's a more appropriate analogy. Just fixing the car, which in the analogy would be sort of our website, is not actually what we need to do. We need to fix the factory. The factory is, how are we able to search for items on our website? How are people able to be able to access our information? The car is the website, and we can, we're tinkering with that every day. The issue is, is that Craig's got to be making changes and mindful of changes that are going to last us for years and years and years and years and years. And so we're fixing factory-related stuff which impacts the actual car or the website that we're doing, and then we're doing individual changes within the car itself. So we've got certainly some work to do on that, but you know, it's something that we think is a priority and something that you may also see in the fiscal year 15 budget as well.
Were you done, or maybe?
Yes.
Okay. Just on that same subject, I think regardless of the analogy, the website needs work, and I was glad to see, you know, some of that addressed in here. But I think that needs to be a priority, as does the, and I was glad to see the talk about apps for reporting of problems, but not everybody uses apps. And the reporting and tracking of problems has been a problem for years. And we've made several attempts at improving that, and with, I haven't seen a whole lot of success in that. So whether it be apps or how we do it, I think, like I say, I think apps is limit, limits our capability to just a subset of the community. I think we need to be able to track the problems in a much better fashion than we do now. And again, that would be a priority.
I'll agree with Councilmember Seamus last statement.
Talk about working closely with the Gazette. I know we used to have a reporter showing up at all of our meetings, and now that reporter doesn't show up at our meetings, which is a problem with the Gazette, not you guys. But you've mentioned the word, you said, "we help them do certain things." Can you elaborate on that?
Well, I was more alluding to the fact that we try to build positive relationships with various reporters, because a lot of times a newspaper or Gazette, they experience high turnover, and at times they're tied with journalism especially.
Yeah.
But when we get a reporter on our beat, it behooves us, is of utmost importance that we, when they need access, we give them access, and we develop a positive working relationship with them so they feel like they can trust us, and they're more likely to write a positive story. Or paint us in a favorable light, or just not, or they feel more comfortable just talking to city staff in and of themselves, rather than just writing the story and just not wanting to deal with us.
I feel the same way. And I always try to fall over backwards when I get a Gazette reporter or any reporter to sort of leave a positive impression, not just on the substance, but in the process. My frustration with the Gazette continues to be that they don't deliver their newspaper to a large portion of the city and have it for four years. And all the efforts that we make to get positive reporting in the Gazette is wasted because a good portion of the population never sees the newspaper unless they come down to city hall to pick one up. You can't find one anywhere in Ward 6, not in any of the stores, there's no, there's no even boxes. And same, I think is true enough to hurt in other sections of the city. I don't expect you to solve it, but I need you just to be aware of it.
Well, that's one of the, that's one of the nice soft benefits of social media is when a good story does get run, we can share it on our own channels. And that increases its reach a little bit. You know, people might not even be aware the Gazette exists.
I'm sure they aren't. I would agree with Terry with regard to the website. I'm so grateful that it is, that you've got it up and the new one. So all homage to thee with regard to that. I know it took a long time to get there, but in terms of it's just right out of the box, it's, you know, the page that you open to, and whether it's on a computer or on a mobile device, it's just cumbersome to use. I mean, the mobile, whatever, the first page just goes on and on and on and on. Whereas if you go to a newspaper website, you'll find all kinds of headlines where you can just touch it, it'll take you, leap you right to what it is you want without having to just to keep going like this with the whole thing.
Yeah, we're mindful of that. Everyone knows, on this dais, knows how problematic the web development process was and how difficult it is.
Right.
And we're mindful of that. You're going to see a mid-cycle refresh actually in a few weeks where the website will start looking a little bit sharper. And we're starting to see increasing returns behind the scenes of all the hard work we've been doing, where the backend process is getting more efficient, so it's more easier to make those changes upfront.
Uh-huh.
And we're going to start working, the analytics that I look at every day bears this out, we're going to start getting away from the departmental structure so we can do things like that. And we can actually spend the money out of house and not feel like we're spending too much or wasting it, because now we know concisely what we want and what we need. So I can hire out and get a theme made, or get a site audit and get the backend structured so it's as efficient as it can be.
Okay.
One of the things that I never, I don't think was communicated clearly at the beginning of web development, but it's become more clear now that we're out of that hard, intense beginning cycle, was the current site still mirrors a lot of the problems of the original site, but we are slowly walking away from that, and we're getting there.
Okay.
And the input I get from residents bears that out. We're getting there, we're not quite there yet, but now we know where we're headed.
All right. I'll say. I don't want to take any more time. I do want to thank you for your enthusiasm, and thank Alvaro for the great quality of the programming in the cable area. Appreciate that. I look forward to talking with you maybe about what you mean that we want to influence outcomes of other organizations, but I think tonight's not the night to talk about that.
Small example of that would be municipal tax duplication. Want to make sure we say the right message on those kinds of things to hopefully influence.
Thank you. Thanks. A lot.
Thank you. Alvaro and Craig, thank you.
Thank you.
The last department, not the least obviously, is our police force. Not necessarily in the interest of time, but mostly in the interest of efficiency. You will see some 22 slides in this presentation. Many of these slides were presented, all of these slides really were presented during the crime meeting on Tuesday night. And this, the presentation that the chief has will be put up on the website. And so we are not planning on going through all 22 slides this evening. I think the chief was going to hit
If you want. No, that's fine, because I watched the whole thing on TV.
There we go.
Yeah, but you were on drugs.
Yeah, I was on drugs.
And I was going to say, just because somebody isn't at the meeting doesn't mean they haven't reviewed the meeting through some other method.
That's right. So maybe if the chief can hit, I'll be honest, two slides out of the presentation, I think that would be, that would be good.
I need two.
Well, I'll, it may be more than two, but not much more. Measures of success, and non-traditional measures of success, let me just go forward to it. You know, addressing quality of life complaints, you know, the day-to-day stuff, the traffic complaints, and quality of life crimes that occur, noise complaints, things like that. Reduction in perception of crime, we talked, we heard a lot about that this week from the residents. Regardless of whether there is crime or not crime, the perception of crime is just as important. Building a police and community partnership and community satisfaction surveys. The good news under the traditional methodologies that we still have to use, because those are the real solid metrics that we can use, crimes dropped 43% in five years. Violent crimes lowered, gang-related crime, we went from over 100 gang-related incidents a couple of years ago to virtually none now. We went from over 100 gang-related incidents a couple of years ago to virtually none now, mostly because of the gang task force and our coordinated effort with the county as well and participation in that task force. Traffic crashes and pedestrian crash reduction and we really like to see a reduction in citizen complaints while we're still maintaining, you know, good arrest records, things like Most of these slides you saw the other day, so I'll go past that.
One that you didn't mention the other night and you skipped just now is the regional crime trends right after the one you were doing and you were telling me something about why you have that on there, that slide of the guy on the motorcycle.
Well, that was the one I chased in a stolen motorcycle and he went through our speed camera at 107 miles an hour on New Hampshire Avenue. And then the other slide up on the other side, the other left-hand corner is actually a video surveillance from a commercial establishment for a robbery that took place just outside the city in, on Fenton Street in Silver Spring. So, part of why I did it was to show the technology that, those, both of those videos, but especially the motorcycle was absolutely essential in the identification of the subject, whether it be tag readers or video, it's an essential part of our job now. Now, one slide I didn't include the other day, but drug arrests by types, I just wanted to hit on that real quick. We've gone from 40% to 25% for marijuana arrests. We've refocused a little bit more on arrests of individuals for DUI, which, you know, obviously DUIs are involved in 50% of the fatal crashes and usually it's comorbid with other drugs as well. So, one of the bad things, just got something today in the mail that we're going to focus on is heroin overdoses and heroin use. They've estimated over 600 or 800 deaths in the state of Maryland last year from heroin overdoses. We've had at least one in the city that I know of in the last year, not to mention all the ones we get at the hospital, but actually one resident in the city. The heroin isn't your grandmother's heroin, it's 33% stronger. People are dying from it and we are also instituting a program within the department to, or we're going to try to institute it, in which we're going to provide our officers with nasal spray Narcan, which will eliminate the effects of opiates in the system almost immediately. We are working with the Adventist Hospital, see if they can do the training for us. Once we're trained, then we can issue this stuff and it's not a very expensive.
How do you spell Narcan? N-A-R-C-A-N?
Well, Narcan is the, I think it's Knoxalone is the actual generic, but it's Narcan is N-A-R-C-A-N. It's the brand name.
Yeah.
I mean, they've been carrying on medic units for years, you know, in the IV forms or the injectable forms. Arrest by wards, the winner is Ward Six by far, but if we looked at the hotspots, that would explain it as well. So, in the previous slide. Response times, I'll just hit that real quick. Our response times for priority calls are three minutes. They've gone from three minutes to three and a half minutes, I think, from 12 to 13, but we dropped our non-priority call response times a little bit as well, depending on month and staffing, but you can read that at your own leisure. Just so you know, we've handled over 7,300 calls, dispatch called for service and somewhere in the area, I think, because I can't read my own slide here, but it's about 12,000, I think, self-initiated fueled activities. And we break it down, you can read it, you can look at it by the type of activity, but traffic stops versus other stops or other events. I showed that slide the other day. And just for comparison, here is a slide of, that you can look at, I'll explain it and you can look at it later, but if you look at the George one, G1, and H1 beets of Silver Spring, this is the third district, those are the ones that had joined or abut Tacoma Park.
G1 and H1.
And these are not their official stats, these are their, this is page 19. I was going to, before Brian said, I had 21 slides, I was going to say, would you please switch to slide 410? But if you look at those two, between the two beets, it's probably about the same size as Tacoma Park when you add both beets together. One is more commercial, one is less commercial or is more residential. So, you can just get an idea what's going on around us in Montgomery County. And these again are not the UCR official stats, these are the crime analyst stats, which aren't necessarily the stats that they release at the end of the year. I also created, had Andrew before, he bailed out on us, some heat maps. Now, these heat maps, just without going into too much detail, basically you can look at it, but the heat maps are the locations of reportable collisions that we actually wrote an accident report and it also has the locations of the speed camera and I threw in the 2009 versus 2013. This does not tell you the number of collisions, it just tells you the density of collisions for that year. But if you look at the numbers, 2013 was our lowest number and that was before we had the speed camera corridors totally up and running. So, it'll be interesting to see what next year's stats will be. If it drops more, then we'll know it's working really well. I think we talked a lot about this and you can look over this. Our biggest challenge right now is staffing, is maintaining our staff, hiring the crime analyst positions, the sworn officer positions and trying to do that at the same time that we're driving the car and trying to fix it at the same time.
And I just want to underscore on the staffing side because I think they discussed this at the crime meeting on Tuesday. You know, A, this staffing issue is not unique to Tacoma Park. I think you heard Chief Manger from Montgomery County talk about some of his stats and, you know, obviously we don't have the size of that force, thank goodness, because, you know, he's dealing with, you know, 60 to 70 vacancies a year, which doesn't even include some of his officers that are injured or sort of out. You know, fortunately due to the size of our, size of our force, we're talking, you know, handfuls of officers that are out. And, you know, these aren't officers that are leaving the force in any way, these are really officers that are forced out because they've been injured on the duty, they're retiring. We had, as the chief has mentioned, we had a crime analyst that followed his heart and his girlfriend to Chicago and so, you know, we're dealing with what I call more natural turnover, natural vacancies that we just need to continue to work through. So, I just wanted to sort of define those vacancies a little bit better.
Yeah, and when we talked a little bit of over-hiring and there really is no such thing as over-hiring, it's either budgeted or it's not budgeted. Our over-hiring, I think when we discussed it last year, was we could over-hire as long as we stayed within our budget under the code. So, the reality is if it's in the budget, we can hire them. So, now we can hire them a little bit early as long as we stay under budget. And the reality of what the county has done, they know they're losing four officers a month. They know they have officers in the disconnected service retirement plan that have to leave by this date because they're in that plan. So, in three years, this is who's going to retire this month. They can do that because they have a large number. They also probably have 40 or 50 officers on the injured reserve at any one point in time. So, when they know they have that kind of attrition and they have a history that they can follow with us, it could be, we may go another two or three years without losing an officer or we could have an officer decide to retire in two months. We have two that are eligible right now. So, they don't plan on it, but that could happen if something better came along and the opportunity. So, we have to look at, if we have to increase staff to cover for that and to cover for the training of new officers, then that's something that we need to look at as a challenge.
If I may interrupt you, I would ask the city clerk if she could maybe refresh my memory on what we did authorize, I believe it was two years ago.
My recollection is we had a sworn strength of 41 and we authorized over-hiring to 42.
No. Well, that was before my time and actually we started, I believe, at 42.
We'll check.
Yeah.
We'll check to see what it was.
Yeah, that was, my understanding also was that we were actually at 42 at one point and dropped back down and then went back up and, but that was before I was here. When I, last year when we talked about some of the shortages because we had people that we anticipated leaving, we looked at the code and that's what the code allowed for us to do, was we can hire early with, even without a vacancy, as long as we stay within budget, but, you know, that was.
Appreciate it.
One of the things that going forward, opportunities going, we were talking, just the previous presentation about social media and outlets and COG has now switched to a new alert system or a new vendor that is not in place yet, but Alert Tacoma, Alert Montgomery, all those venues will now be switching over to the new company. The new company is offering a lot more robust program that not only will these things go out to things such as traditional pagers, cell phones, things like that, but it will actually go out to Twitter and social media as well. So, we're still learning about it. They just signed the contract so there's, so we know it's going forward, but that's for the entire COG region. I talked a little bit, electronics and things like that. Technology is a force multiplier and we need to take full advantage of it and that's sort of been my mantra since I've been here, whether it's LPRs and thermal cameras. The video partnership program is something that we really want to push forward and that's where we use private videos with volunteer participants.
And the question that I see keep, that keeps coming up on that front is, for instance, the folks on Sycamore are saying, well, the next step is having you identify if there's a particular technology or a particular company or a particular hardware that makes a difference that they should do so that it's more compatible is, and my sense without knowing the answer was that it's probably just, no, use it and it'll be valuable.
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer that they get a quality system that's digital. I mean, I don't know anybody sells a non-digital recording system anymore, but there are businesses in the city and there are people that use the old-school VHS-type systems, but what we need is high-definition video is number one, placed in the right locations, but, you know, we have an ethical issue when we start recommending companies or brands and things like that. What we do plan on doing is coming out with a list of maybe minimum specs that we would like to see and then they can go to their own vendors or ask their companies to provide it.
Chief, I also know that, just as it relates to some of the information on Tuesday night, you sent out, I think to some of the listservs today, just an update on, something I just wanted you to just mention that real quick.
Yeah, and some of the, you know, the measures of success are, you know, sometimes just getting the bad guys off the street and we've had probably, well, we've had three commercial robberies, one theft that was related to those of cell phone stores within the city. The region has been hit with it as well, Prince George's County and Aronel Mills as well as DC. We've made arrests in those cases or gotten warrants for the individuals in those cases and conducted search warrants and have closed cases, not only in Tacoma, all four cases in Tacoma Park, but as well as some of those neighboring jurisdictions. As far as the street robberies and the carjackings, we've made arrests in both carjackings. Today we, or yesterday, we actually, we had already identified the individual, but we had to do case enhancement before we could make the arrest. But he was taken into custody, 17-year-old, he's charged as an adult, was taken into custody the other day. There was evidence that was recovered that would tie him into robberies, including the street robbery of the other, I can't remember the young woman's name, the blonde woman that was here, her robbery, he was the one that committed that one.
Jen, I think it's Jen.
Jen. And he committed the Sycamore carjacking as well. From his history and the way he operates, I would probably venture to say he was involved or peripherally involved in the other two street robberies that occurred in the city as well. So, that really brings it down to almost 100% closure rate for robberies in the city in the last month and a half, something that the detectives can be very proud of.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Yep, and he's off the street probably for a while.
Yeah, I would think. There's an awful lot of talk at Tuesday night's meeting about CCTV and the chief for the district, what's her name?
Kathy Lanier.
Yeah, Kathy Lanier was, made the comment that, she said, "Well, the truth is, is we catch a lot more stuff from people, from the privacy cameras than we do from the public cameras."
Correct.
And so, I'm thinking if we can't devise a program in the city where we can use city money or external grant money to subsidize and incentivize commercial property owners or residents at crucial locations.
Absolutely, and one of the things that we actually talked about was tax incentives, maybe that's being done in some other jurisdictions where people that purchase their own security system get a tax rebate or tax incentive for putting in that system in their own house as long as a certain percentage of the public right-of-way is covered by their security system.
Yeah.
And that seems to be fairly successful. We actually are looking at that and that was, would have been in a later presentation when we had, come out with our SafeCam program, but it's absolutely one incentive that I think would be very good.
Definitely would want to hear more about that. I mean, you don't know this, but since I've been on the city council, I've, you know, with Brian's predecessor, talked about the idea of trying to do that for the merchants along New Hampshire Avenue, which is our primary hotspot, as we all know.
And one of the other, I'm sorry.
And overcoming, for example, the gas station owners down at the lower end of Eastern in the 6600 block, their reservations about putting up cameras for fear that it might scare away customers and trying, you know, figuring out a way of educating these business people to understand the advantages of doing it for them and everybody else.
Well, and they actually, you know, most of them do have cameras and, you know, their older, some of them are older systems, some of them aren't high-resolution or the cameras aren't placed in the best locations. But the reality of it is what we, what takes time from us is we'll get the call for a robbery or a burglar per snatch at, you know, 12:00 midnight. And, you know, the minimum wage clerk that's working in the gas station has no idea how to operate the video system. And so, we have to wait till the next day or if it's a weekend, you know, the first Monday to obtain that video and it delays our investigation. So, what part of the SafeCam program is that people would actually register their cameras with us voluntarily with the type of system and the contact information so that we can get ahold of them right away, that, you know, right after the crime occurs or we can, we will have access ourselves if they so wish to give it to us, either wirelessly, you know, remotely or from the site, that we can actually get in and look at the video. So, I mean, that's part of the program.
Good. I look forward to hearing more about that. When do you expect the crime analyst position to be filled?
Well, now that we're through this week and the presentations and we also had promotional interviews this week and, you know, we hired two new officers and had to get them equipped and put into the academy, now we're really focusing on that position. So, I'm hoping that we'll be able to get through them very, very soon because it's a critical position for me. The county has the same problem filling their positions, they've got some openings, the third district has no crime analyst right now and I've been trying to get them to loan me one. I'll pay them part-time to come over and do it and they're just so swamped that, you know, it's very hard to get that. But we have, we have over 50 applicants that are still in the process and we're weeding it down to a reasonable number to do interviews, but I would hope to have that person onboard by the end of the month, next month, not this month.
Okay.
Chief, thank you.
Okay, and all this will be on the website, plus there'll be additional information with the annual report that's going to be a little more detailed as well. Thank you.
That concludes the department roundtables. I'm hopeful that it's been helpful. I appreciate the efforts of council in particular in going through this and I know this week has been a lot of late-night meetings and it's been a little emotional this week, so I appreciate you all's participation in this and hopefully, I know that for many of our departments, it's not enough time to go through and it's a lot of information to absorb, so I recognize that, but hopefully.
But it can be more time than we end up spending when it happens only during the budget.
Exactly.
Yeah, this is, this is all to the good.
It's great, I appreciate it.
It's better than nothing, which was what we used to get, you know, prior to the budget process.
Right, prior to the budget process, right. So, next time you'll talk to these folks will probably be in April for the budget process.
Okay, can't wait. Get in there.
Thank you.